Good evening, thank you for coming out. This is the Pleasantville City Council Work Meeting. Today is Monday, August 6, 2018. The time is 6:30 PM. This meeting has been duly advertised in local newspapers and performed with the Oklahoma Public Meeting Act, otherwise known as the Sunshine Ball. Roll call please. Swan.
Here.
Sis Swan.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Harmon. Christmas.
Here.
Allen.
Ward.
Here.
I'd like to have a quick vote of the previous minutes.
Motion.
August 18th. Are there any names of persons? Mr. President, this is one of the Councilmen Harmon and the others.
Thank you.
First we have on the agenda is not notating there's a proclamation from the mayor for the South Jersey County Medical Center for upper awareness week. Is anyone here from South Jersey?
I have a proclamation for claiming August the 12th and 18th as National Healthcare Week. And I just want to say for over 50 years, the community health centers have provided affordable, comprehensive, preventative healthcare for those that are less fortunate. And what really intrigues me is that they provide access to care for our nation's veterans and also address the opioid epidemic, as well as responding to a national disaster. So Stephanie Weaver is here on behalf of South Jersey County Medical Center. And that's located at 932 South Main Street?
Yes.
Is that a parking avenue, of course, on Rock Hill?
Yes, right across the street.
Okay. Yeah, so health centers, they've been around for a long time. And I just want to see if you can say a few words about it?
Sure, absolutely. We actually have a deck for National Health Centers, which on the 18th was a celebration for the community. So if anyone's available, you can come out to that. And also, we really appreciate the support of the community and the council and the mayor for what we're doing. We strive to provide affordable healthcare for everybody. We don't turn anyone away. So we provide services on a sliding scale.
That's August the 18th. What time?
That one is from 5:00 to 7:00, or 5:00 to 8:00 PM.
August the 18th. They sure have a lot of food, so.
There's a moon bounce, come on.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Next is the oath of office. Do you have anybody here? Okay. I have the oath of office for Class 3 officers. Um, Jose Nunez. Tyler Scarborough. And Graham Cox.
Who's going to go by? Okay. I'll put you down this way, so you can have your candy cam. Okay. You go to the right.
Yes, sir.
I will state your name. Aye.
Aye, proceed, sir.
Do some miss where? Where's my name? Aye. Do some miss where? That would support the Constitution.
That would support the Constitution.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And the Constitution.
The Constitution.
The State of Jersey.
The State of Jersey.
That will bear true faith.
That will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And the government established.
And the government established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
And the buried people.
And the buried people.
That will faithfully.
Faithfully.
And partially.
And partially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Special law enforcement officer of Class 3.
Special law enforcement officer of Class 3.
For the city of Pleasantville. Thank you. About the 10 hours. Chief, just explain what you do and where the situation is right here.
These officers right here, first of all, a lot of y'all came back after 25 years. I don't know why, but, start with the retired chief here. He's, I always have to mention, he's one of the reasons that I'm in the position that I am right now. Break out into the 10 and I've just been moving ever since. But they're the school resource officers to handle all our incidents in the schools and things like that. And, you know, to keep things under control for us. For our officers that are out there on the street that have to go down to the school because of these three right here helps us tremendously, you know, be controlled here.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome back. Okay. At the swing of our Class 2 officer, Keith Fane and Eugene Sharp. Okay. I will state your name.
Aye. I can arrange.
Do some miss where?
Do some miss where?
That would support the Constitution.
That would support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
The State of Jersey.
And the State of Jersey.
That will bear true faith.
That will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And the government established.
And the government established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
And the buried people.
And the buried people.
That will faithfully.
That will faithfully.
And partially.
And partially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Special law enforcement officer of Class 2.
Special law enforcement officer of Class 2.
For the city of Pleasantville.
For the city of Pleasantville.
That's my office.
That's my office.
Oh, we got it.
Same deal, ladies and gentlemen, these are our Class 2 officers. What they do is provide security in the courts, you know, when our court days, the metal detector out there in the lobby, and pretty much do anything we ask them to do. They respond to calls, you know, when they're not in the court, or at the metal detector, helping our officers out, just as we just had with Officer Fane right here. I think that's what we saw, Mr. Harmon, something he was helping out, something on the street. So they're a great asset for us.
Okay. Next is agenda review. Personal agenda review, report is number 12, the second reading, unfortunatious. We got a recommended, is admitting chapter 300, article 7, section 19, providing sale of recreational marijuana throughout the city. Okay, through the regular session, we'll have the presentation. At this time? Are there any questions or comments? Number two is resolution 132, authorizing entry into and execution of redevelopment agreement with RGC 3 LLC or single purpose entity to be formed by RGC 3 LLC to condition redevelopment for 11 devastating redevelopment area. And a presentation will be held in regular session. Okay. Are there any questions or comments? Next one?
Resolution 133, offer for sale property known as block 64, lot 16, AKA 129 South Main Street in the city for a minimum bid of $5,000.
Questions or comments?
Please note, sell approved, conducted on September 17th.
Okay, next please.
Resolution 134, grant approval for corn drop to the Pleasantville Police Foundation, which is scheduled for August the 25th, from the time of 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
Questions or comments? Next please.
Resolution 135, approve for submission of municipal aid grant application MA-2019-FusvilleCity-0017 and execute grant agreement with the New Jersey Department of Transportation.
Any questions or comments?
Resolution 136, authorizing city to enter to a little random agreement with Stockton University for the homework completion program.
Same program session?
Yes, it's here. Okay.
Resolution 137, authorize service by most of the being misleads against properties claimed by the city.
Questions? Next please.
Resolution 138, proclaim the office of government at 18, 2018 as National Healthcare Week.
Questions or comments? Mr. Comment to refer to, if I can go back to resolution 136, just to further give clarity on the homework program. Last Tuesday, for two days, we think the program is still successful, but it will be up for a week. So they will be touring along with our police department, you know, to present it from the school four days a week, for, starting September and then June.
I'm going to change the angle, actually. Ready?
Give or take the argument.
What did you want to say?
They are anticipating the disruption coming back and probably will. Okay, next please.
Resolution 139, admitting the contract between the city of Pleasantville and mainland police for level association, number 77.
Any questions or comments? Next please.
Resolution 140, authorize an agreement with the implement group to assist with new recreation and mill plants at the warehouses at Pleasantville.
Questions? Next please. Next is review of the bill list.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to give it up to the bill list for the period of over a couple bills that are large bills of, by no measure. Page one of the bills to be paid, three quarters of the way down to Atlantic County Soil Guardians for track pickup and recycling, $111,000 for this month. We're on page two, halfway down to Atlantic County municipal JIF, $376,000 under their third quarter payment for property liability order with competition insurance. Three below that, Horizon Blue Cross Blue Shield, for medical payments for both active as well retired employees. Skip forward to page. Page six, and the third one down is our payment to the school for July taxes collected for $737,000. This is for July. Next, council meeting will be the one for August. They want to give all that money at one time. And then bills that have been paid between last council meeting and this council meeting. On the first page, halfway down is the payment to Portland Avenue, as approved by our engineer for $154,000, which was to be the final payment for Portland Avenue work. The bottom two on that page are for our summer food program to Sevesco for providing food services first three weeks in July for our summer camp program, our food service program. Page two, just below is the wire transfers, is the $582,000 for payroll July 19th. Skip down, the next, skip the next two, then 1, 2, 3, 4, our payments made in the debt service for the month of, you made, month of orders, anywhere from $320,000 down. And then the last one is the pay for last Friday, $392,000, sorry, $592,000 for payroll. So they're the major items that were paid this period. That's normal, all the other bills are normal operating bills, anywhere from $20 to $1,500 to help run the city. I don't believe it's like utility payments in this one, it will be in the next one. Any questions?
Any questions to the bill list? Okay, thank you. Is that just part of the portion? Okay, any of the public services to speak on the agenda items, please come forward, state your name, your address, and your concern.
Good evening, both Harmon, here in South Chester Avenue, Pleasantville, New Jersey, of course. I'm here today, the evening, Mayor, Council President Ward, and all the council members. I'm here today as the chair, chairperson for the Pleasantville Economic Development Tourism Special Events Advisory Committee. On the agenda, you see that you will be having a presentation in 20 new, from the RGC 3 LLC and the Super Grow Labs LLC. And he had a last Thursday, he had a presentation for our committee. And our committee presented a letter, we'd like to present a letter to you and to RGC 3 on your behalf. The letter reads, "On behalf of the City of Pleasantville Economic Development Tourism Special Events Advisory Committee, we are submitting this letter in support of RGC 3 LLC and Super Grow Labs LLC's application to open operators' entry in the City of Pleasantville. We believe in the medical marijuana initiative and strongly feel that RGC 3 LLC and Super Grow Labs has positioned themselves to successfully operate a business that cultivates and manufactures medical cannabis. The advisory committee was very impressed with RGC 3's and Super Grow Labs transparency of their organization. As such, their attention regarding public safety, complaints for training and employment, especially considering locals first, confirms that their concern for the quality of the life of Pleasantville parallels with the mayor, council, and the Pleasantville administration. We appreciate this opportunity to share our experience with RGC 3 and Super Grow Labs LLC, and is in our hope that you would find our comments agree what we've gone in our application." Into that. Thank you. I believe started to answer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the conference? I'd like to acknowledge Councilman Corsi, preholder. I said Councilman, forgive me, preholder Corsi. Thank you for coming out. Okay, any councilwoman, comments?
No. Yes, I do. Thank you, Council President. We have talked about the issue I'm going to talk about in a phase, but it's come to a point that I think we need to really dig into it. First, let me ask a couple of questions of our administrator. Do we have any legal obligations to the state to videotape our meetings for the public?
Not going out.
So the videotape, this comes by way of information from our folks that call me who are at home and cannot see our meetings. So that videotaping our meetings is a courtesy that we're giving to the public?
Correct.
Well, I believe this year, we have not had it on the video for Channel 97. And I'm beginning to question, why is the city spending money to videotape our meetings if they're not, their purpose has not been served? So that's basically the question, that we are putting out funds to videotape, and it's not, the public's not achieving that benefit at all. And I'd like to open it up if possible.
That's a valid concern, Councilman. I'm not certain if you're accurate about none of the council meetings running for this user. We know that we have been experiencing some technology difficulties within the school district who is responsible for our area health meetings, and we've been working with that to try to resolve it. Currently, the city is working with Comcast. Comcast is the provider that provides the public access stations to all municipalities for education and governmental informational programs. Our agreement, the City of Pleasantville's agreement was with the Pleasantville School District. We've had difficulties with them as it relates to, and they are in, who's responsible for what. We've learned this summer that the person that was responsible for running the station this summer is not working during the summer months. So that is one reason why they're not seeing the tape aired during the summer months. Aside from that, we've had some other issues with them. So internally, we're working with Comcast, we're working with the school to get quotes or mobile courses to get the equipment and run this from in-house. Hopefully, we can get that resolved before September, but I'll be keeping abreast where we are working on it. And I know that we have, the panel's been working diligently with us to help resolve that, and I don't know if he has any additional information other than what I've just shared.
I think you were accurate in what you described to Councilman Christmas. Ultimately, again, the channel is, the owner of the channel is the City of Pleasantville. However, there was an agreement made between the Pleasantville School District and the City of Pleasantville as to who would operate the channel, and at the time, it was agreed that the school district would operate the channel. They've had some personnel changes. At some point, I used to be in charge of the channel, but I'm no longer because I'm moving to another position. So, right now, there's really no one who's responsible for operating the channel. So we've been addressing issues as we get calls, myself and Mr. Young, and we try our best to address whatever concerns that are being shared. But ultimately, there's nobody who's responsible for the channel on a day-to-day basis to address issues when community members may have concerns about not being able to view information that's on the channel. But as we receive and I deliver the videos to Mr. Young, he puts it on a system and then it goes out to run on the air. Unfortunately, there are some times or instances when certain community members may experience technical difficulties, but ultimately, on the back end, we know that the council meetings are being run. See, I like to say that we did have a conversation about transferring everything over to the City of Pleasantville. I just handed over some information to Mr. Ludi regarding how much it would cost to have everything sent over, the purchasing of equipment and so forth. So he has that information, he can share it with you at your earliest convenience.
Question. Who takes the responsibility for the digital information that's on Channel 97, the written information that goes on there? Who takes care of that?
The slides that you.
Yeah, the one that does things.
Yeah, we actually, the city actually creates the slides and submits it to the district for, for airing.
To the school district?
Yes.
So they're putting that on, but the videotaping's not getting on?
That's what it appears to be. That appears to be an issue, yes.
Well, my concern is that we're putting out this expense, and it's not, it just not happening.
We share the concern, we're trying to, you know, provide remedy for it, but we understand what you're saying, and we're working on it.
Then it would be addressed in the beginning of the year when we assign our, or his task to be done outside our professional.
If you're talking about professional services, we can reevaluate the professional service at that time, but I'm hoping, I'm very hopeful that we'll get our resolve with it beginning of the year.
Okay, thank you, Council President.
Is there anyone else that would like to share anything, discuss it?
Yes, President. I guess first, let me apologize to my mayor and your mayor because I was supposed to be with him this evening at 5:30. Few missed the public and I arrived, but I'm too busy to get ready for tomorrow. And I hope you've seen the flyer, addresses the National Night Out, which is across the country. And tomorrow, you can just follow the blue signs, and that will take you to Langston Avenue. A good landmark is going down Main Street. You'll come to the biggest light house church, that's called Langston Avenue, and turn right. And we are there, and we are literally feel the time is, I don't think you can see, the time is 5:00 to 8:00 PM. There are many activities taking place, cookout, refreshments, I think the refreshment hotels and hamburgers are complimentary, community safety information, our fire department puts on a demonstration as well as our police department. I was really excited last year to see K9 dog leap through a window and make an arrest in another car, really excited. So come down and see those kind of activities, children activities, face painting, and we do have disc jockeying, and there are many activities that make police on the stage. Let me back up and say, welcome, Councilman, to me, David Moore. And I see Mr. Carson over there, Allen Spring, Fresh 50 Freedom. I also see Chairman Al Donaboy, and the president of our chairperson, Billy Ward. And I see, and I believe that's all I see of the night from here. I promise you a great evening tomorrow, I pray for another day, and just follow the blue signs, and you go right to the facility there, and some of the blue paint's still on my hands from the blue signs. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Harmon. Anyone else? I can do this. Mayor?
I just want to add to Council Harmon, on, that's tomorrow, 5 to 8. It's Children Road and Langston, it's the old baseball park. And on the, August the 18th, we have the annual 5K walk run, Peace and Wellness Walk. August the 18th, at the old Pleasantville High School, starts at 8:30. We do exercise, I'll watch you guys do it, 9 o'clock is when you start the walk and run. And then lastly, is August the 25th, from noon to 9:00 PM, we have our 22nd Annual Latin Music Festival, event sort of, so just keep these in mind, okay? Have a fun summer, big summer series, it's really exciting. Thank you.
Madam President, if I may, have the chief, the real, recently removed. Would you continue to achieve and certainly your efforts to count visible and visit, because you guys have been the last few days? We experienced the 16 and 17 accidents right behind the Lord's of Newton Church, to Pleasantville or Chester Avenue, with tunes. And I beg and excuse again to say to those who come through our city and mostly on Shore Road, please, 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 honor the opportunity. And we're just observing people just crashing each other. They come out of Westland City, and that street is open, straight up to Franklin. And those coming out of Chester, just don't stop. So Public Works, if you're here, thank you for.
So, come down and see those kind of activities. Children activities, face painting, and we do have disc jockey. And there are many activities that take place on the stage. Let me back up and say welcome, Councilman, to me, David Moore. And I see Mr. Carson over there, Allen Spring, Fresh Fifty Freedom. I also see Chairman Alzona Boy, and the president of our chairperson, Billy Ward. And I see, and I believe that's all I see of the night from here. I promise you a great evening tomorrow. I pray for another day and just follow the blue signs and you go right to the facility there. And some of the blue dates still on my hands from the blue signs. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hahn. Anyone else want to add something to this?
Mayor? I just want to add to Councilman Hahn. On, that's tomorrow, 5:00 to 8:00. It's Children Road and Langston, it's the old baseball park. And on the August 18th, we have the annual 5K walk-run peace and wellness walk. August 18th, at the old Pleasantville High School, starts at 8:30. We do exercise, I'll watch you guys do it, but 9:00 is when you start the walk and run. Okay? And then lastly, is August 25th, from noon to 9:00 P.M., we have our 22nd Annual Latin Music Festival event, sort of. So, just keep these in mind, okay? Have a fun summer, big summer series, it's really exciting. Thank you.
Madam President, if I may, have the chief, the Gwinn, recently removed. Would you continue to achieve and certainly your efforts to count visible and visit? Because you guys have been the last few days. We experienced the 16th and 17th accidents, right behind the launch of Newton Church, to Pleasantville or Chester Avenue, tunes. And I beg and excuse again to say to those who come through our city and mostly on Shore Road, please, 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 honor the opportunity. And we're just observing people just crashing. We come out of Westland City and that street is open, straight up to Franklin. And those coming out of Chester, just don't stop. So, public works, if you're here, thank you for coming immediately and correcting bushes or limbs from the tree. Because there was an accident, a 17th one, on claim they couldn't see the stop sign. But please, stop those signs and the right to save, make the noise. Thank you.
Okay. Nothing else anyone would like to share? I'd like to have a little close to the question.
Motion, second.
Good evening. Thank you for coming out. This is the Pleasantville City Council meeting. Today is Monday, excuse me, Monday, August 6th. The time is 17:00. This meeting has been duly advertised in the local newspapers in accordance with the Oakland Public Meeting Act, otherwise known as sunshine law. Will you please stand for the invocation and remain seated in the class room? How are we, the John and Helen, how are we out here? Like, um, that we're down and our presentation is... Give us just a second, I need to read. And the citizens of Texas, and the true people of Texas, and the citizens of Texas, we need to make a declaration, that we're to be equal, and we're to give our own accord. Our allegiance to our way, and the United States of America, and to the great work of the citizens, and our nation, from May 9th, and the physical, the liberty, and justice of the world. War, war, please, Swan?
Here.
Siskin?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Harmon? Christmas?
Here.
Allen?
Ward?
Here. The two of us. I'd like to have the motion to the present agreement of the previous minute.
Sure.
Honors and vagas?
Alright.
May your attention to the paper. Mayor, if you have any comments?
Okay, first, so the agenda is ordinance number 12. Public hearing will be held is limiting chapter 300, Article 7, Section 19, limiting sale of recreational marijuana for the city.
Okay. This is the second reading. So anyone that wishes to speak on this ordinance, please come forward, state your name, you're addressing a concern. Okay, I need a motion to...
Someone that's shaking.
Swan?
Yes.
Siskin?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Harmon?
Yes.
Christmas?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Ward is adopted. Next, we have a presentation. I'd like to introduce the city's redevelopment project, Corning, where it's a net. It will be introduced in RGC 3000.
Thank you for the... Good evening, councilmembers, your honor. Today, you're going to have a presentation from RGC 3 and Superior Grow Labs. It's in reference to the redevelopment area on the corner of Devon Lane and Washington Avenue. What we would all remember at the old South Jersey Publishing Printing Site, where they used to actually print the newspaper. RGC 3 purchased that property at the end of December from, we'll call it South Jersey Publishing, one of their entities sold that property at the end of December. As you will be aware or aware, that property was vacant for five or six years. As the press is now publishing up in North Jersey. And it had some environmental conditions and other things that made the property underutilized and really unable to be sold. They tried to sell that property for a long time. RGC 3 came in, they purchased the property, and if you've been back there, they've already demolished the larger building, that's the back part along Devon. They took that building down and they're in the process of renovating the front building, which is a 35,000 square foot building. In the beginning of this year, the city had started to move forward to get redevelopment plan approved on that site. Council asked the planning board to look at it. The planning board made a recommendation and city council approved a redevelopment plan for that site, which is the block 432, Lot 1, Devon Plan Redevelopment Plan. In May, May 7th, city council designated RGC 3 as the redeveloper of the site. And since then, we have, the city worked diligently with the developer to negotiate a redevelopers agreement. We're here tonight to present, and you will vote tonight on a resolution authorizing the execution of redevelopers agreement for that site. And the developer is also going to make a presentation about their proposed use and their renovation and site plan. They're actually going to present a conceptual site plan of how this project will look once it's complete. And, you know, as a note, we heard from the Economic Development Committee that they made a presentation last Thursday. The developer, and it's really two entities, RGC 3 is the property owner and Superior Grow Labs, are going to make an application by the end of this month through the state of New Jersey to receive a license for medical marijuana grow facility. There's only six licenses in the state of New Jersey that'll be available. There's probably going to be between 300 and 400 applications. This group is confident that they have a good application, they're well-prepared, and that makes a difference, that they have more of a turnkey project, they're ready to go, they moved forward, they haven't waited. They have been spending dollars on that site to get ready. And hopefully, you know, they are successful, and if they are, that will be, you know, we will see tonight what the result of that successful bid. So, without really further, I'd like to introduce Jim and George Miller, who are the principals of the development entity, so they can make their presentation.
Good evening. Thanks for having us.
Thank you very much for your time. And we are here to request, respectfully request, that we execute the agreement and we get approval for the site plan. And as Rick said, there's going to be probably 300 or 400 people applying. So every step that we take to move ahead, we believe helps us with our application and helps Pleasantville. This is strictly a medical marijuana facility. We had never intended to do recreational marijuana out of this site. Obviously, you passed the ordinance right before this. So, we'd like to briefly take you through kind of the area. This was the, your attorneys, planners, and economic consultant. Rick asked us to do a map indicating kind of like what was in the area. And everything you see in red on this commercial, you just wanted to do that.
Yeah. The RGC Superior Grow Lab is highlighted in the yellow area. The red areas are strictly industrial and commercial. Age stone, you'll plus the landfill. And this is showing the Black Horse Pike Court where. Cemeteries, burnt green, any of the watered areas are green. Blue are residential areas. The closest school proximity is the Washington Avenue School, which is approximately 6,000 feet or a little over a mile from the location. It is in a UEZ zone, which, yeah, is a good thing too. The second...
If there's any questions about it, we can...
Yeah, Madam President. Could you just... No, no, the people. Yeah, buddy, good. Anybody can see it. Thank you.
Secondly, this is the, it's a 10 acre site with rail. It's surrounded by rail too. There's rail behind a property and then there's a rail spur that comes to the western side of the property. We also had a rail spur to come into the property. The 35,000 square foot building that was mentioned is depicted here. We are proposing to build a approximately 80 by 100 foot additional building and outside greenhouses. The existing parking lot will be repaved, retention area, again, Devon's Lane and Washington Avenue. That is basically the overview of it. The inside of the building is the, these are the plans and layout for what will be constructed inside the building. Believe it or not, we had to put new electric, gas, everything. There was no utilities ran to the, to this building. Everything was ran into the old press building. So, we had to put a new water line, new, all utilities are getting totally replaced. An overview of what the facility will look like. There's approximately a 10-foot fence that's going to go around, not the whole property, which I'd like to go back for just a second, just to show you. Fence area will be actually this outline where the trees are. There won't be any fence in the parking area. So, back to the overview. It shows the new building, the existing building, parking lot, and the greenhouses. This is a east elevation of the property, looking at it from Washington Avenue. Pretentieth Pond Building, nice blue skies. And the south elevation of the parking lot, looking from Devon's Lane, the building and the fenced in area. Lastly, a landscape detail. There'll be grass around the exterior, trees and the fence. Any questions?
Yeah, just, I thought it would help to get a few questions more on the operational side.
Okay.
So, on the one side, you showed the internals of the existing 35,000 square foot building. Could you just talk about the different rooms that are in there?
Sure. This is the Devon's Lane side of the building, which you'll enter the, enter the facility, employee entrance anyway. The dispensary, which the state is making us have a dispensary on the site, will be on the Devon's Lane side and the apartment area in here.
So the dispensary would be, if someone had a prescription, could they pick up their prescription there?
Correct.
Okay.
Employees would walk through. There's lunchrooms, bathrooms, there's seventh row rooms, there's an extraction room, there's packaging rooms. Bakery. Right. You know, employee lunchrooms, changing rooms.
And there's, on the top of that, there's another set of rooms. Why is that? Is that separated from the building?
Yes.
Why is that separated?
What we're, what we're planning is the outside row, you don't want the people to cross-contaminate what you have going on the inside. So, what we're going to have, the employees outside will have their own restroom, break room, change room. All the employees will enter from the southern side of the building. And the ones that are going inside and the ones that are going to be working outside will go into the building here and out.
So what that means is if you're working outside, you cannot get to the inside of that building? Is that...
Yes.
And the people on the inside of the building that are working on the inside of the building can't? Do you have security measures through all the different doors?
Yes.
The security system we have, everybody has a badge. It records everybody who goes through every door.
And it limits your access if you're not...
Correct.
If you have access to those things. Approximately, how many people would be working in the inside facility?
On the inside facility, we're estimating around 40. Full-time, all year round.
All year round, full-time? Because each row room is growing a product? And that grows...
We could grow inside the building approximately five, possibly six times a year.
And then outside, what happens outside?
Outside, on how we have this designed right now, it's going to be a one-time-a-year row, which will be approximately four and a half months. The yields on the outside will be a little bit better than what we're doing on the inside. We're going to do mostly extraction of...
How many employees are on the outside?
About the same.
Of course. So that's about 80 total who are working for the row part of the business.
Yes.
Then there's some administrative staff?
Yeah, that, that is, that number is in the, is in the 40 on the inside.
So, and does the state, if you're fortunate enough to get the license, how, how does the state monitor this?
They have, it's monitored the health department of the state of New Jersey.
So do they have personnel there?
They will.
They will.
Somebody there, essentially, someone will be there every day from the state? Or close to that on a regular basis?
Yeah. It's interesting. Every plant has to get an audited number. So the state comes in and they say, where's plant 2500? You have to know that that's in room 7, row 6, pile 5. They require every single thing you grow to have an audited number. So, an inspector comes in and they randomly want to check a half a dozen plants, you have to be able to tell them exactly where they are, from seed to when they...
For the sale.
Yes.
And we talked about the jobs and job training and Pleasantville first. This is all part of the redevelopers agreement. What's sort of the concept, briefly, of how you think you can, you can get more Pleasantville residents working than normal folks who come to Pleasantville?
What, what we're planning on doing is, again, we're in a Pleasantville first. What we're going to do is to pre-screen potential workers. So, when the facility does come operational, we will have a group wall ready to go. So it's not like we're going to wait until we get the build-out done and then go out and look for people. What we'd like to do is pre-train, pre-screen, have a workforce ready to go when we do our first grow.
One was that fence fire?
Yeah, I just want to add to, we have the rendering of the fence.
Yes.
A lot of things, some of things that, I know you've done this over and over again, been kind of redundant for you, but a lot of this, a lot of some people I've not heard and I've been trying to get in touch on several things. The fence, can everyone see the fence? It's very negative, it's 10 feet high. Am I correct?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Currently, there's a growing facility now, EHT, in the area. But this is nothing new in the area. I wanted to make mention about the employees. We have a job training program for the employees. Also, I want to submit any input from anyone from the public, there's one... Also, I want to, so listen, any input from anyone from the public, because we want to be very transparent. We've worked in collaboration with them right from day one and they addressed all of our questions, all of my concerns. So, if you have any concerns or questions, now's the time to answer. We want to be very transparent about this. I can tell you, I don't remember how many months ago it was, when Jim called me and wanted to meet with me and he met with myself, my business administrator, my city solicitor, are quite concerned. And when he proposed this idea to us, all of our mouths dropped. And that's serious. And then, we listened. And then we became very excited about it. I mean, it's going to happen. See people laughing, but that's what happened. It's right now, currently, we just passed a resolution not to sell any retail recreation and so forth and all that. That's out the window. So, if you have any questions, then now's the time to answer. Any concerns?
Can you, I know you have a presentation of building employees and what we take to put the facility together, how many licenses will be throughout the state. But can you let the public know the benefits of having that with marijuana, some of the benefits for a person that is safe to use?
Unfortunately, I have a 29-year-old daughter died of cancer. And there's an article that came out today that they use the medical marijuana for T-cells. It's now the biggest thing in cancer. They take your T-cells out, they re-engineer them, they put them back in your body to attack cancer. Medical marijuana has actually helped for that process. So, in my world, that's the biggest benefit that is actually now helping, according to this article. We have a young woman we're talking to who also has cancer and she can't keep weight on. She's using medical marijuana right now to keep weight on, to be able to fight the difficult time it is with cancer. So, I can tell you that she, her mother, I haven't talked to her yet, but her mother has indicated she's going to join our advisory board. I'm going to talk to her tomorrow. So, I think they're two pretty good examples. You know, everybody thinks of, can you tell you that marijuana, you think of an easy rider and walking around, so like the joints all over the place, it's just, it's not like that.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. This is a great expense, in other words, this development, all this building. We're turned on, just as the mayor said, but I want to talk about the reality of what could happen. How many folks will be applying?
Do we know? No. Well, I think, I'll tell you what, we have a better handle Thursday because there's a management.
Well, I'm an approach.
Our consultant tells us, our consultant tells us 400.
Okay. For six sites.
Correct.
Two in South Jersey.
The downside is it may not happen, of course. What is your plan for the property that unfortunately would happen?
Well, of course, yeah. I'm also the owner of the old Lennox property on Total Road. It's a 57 acre site, it's a 450,000 square foot building. That also has rail down to it. We were doing a, and just a little bit about my, myself and my company. We had some folks from Blue Harbor came out, they were against a phase two on that project. Anyway, they got moved to Winslow Township. This project came, came up in December 15th, South Jersey Publishing. I'd gotten a home made and offered me the building. And to be very honest with you, this was not my first choice. This came up, a couple of people seen the Atlantic City Press article, sorry, I don't do this every day. So, anyway, they, a couple of different people had, had came out to me. Our biggest client over there is Home Depot and those. We have a backup plan to bring in lumber by rail on the same site.
On this site here?
Yes.
Okay.
Which I've been discussing that, full disclosure with the mayor from the get-go. I feel pretty confident about this, this venture, just because that we are so far ahead, I think, of everybody else with the redevelopment, with ownership of the site. Like George said earlier, 400 people, I think a lot of them are going to be out-of-state people, you know, from the Colorado's, California, everywhere else that has it are, are looking at New Jersey. Well, us and our partnership with the city, you know, we're homegrown. Hopefully, the people that are looking at the applications are looking at that way too.
I understand that and I hope it does happen. So, I mean, it's a lot of money and a lot of employment and all that.
Yes.
The lumber by the rail, what does that mean? I mean, what does that mean, a lumberyard or?
Yes, it would, it would be brought in and distributed out.
Retail wholesale.
Mostly wholesale.
In other words, D-Lumber needs some lumber, they buy it from you and it just, or it's faster for them?
Right, order Home Depot or those.
Right. Now, I hope that part doesn't happen.
I think.
But if it does.
Mr. Schwan has made that very.
Yeah, I understand.
I, I get that.
But we live in a real, we live in a real world.
Yes.
So, what would be the benefit to the city for employment there?
Not as much.
Not as, not as much.
I can imagine.
But, I mean, the actual printing building was dysfunctional. Different levels, it hadn't taken down. You know, this is an environment of finding tenants, is a difficult situation. So, you know, if someone had a better suggestion, we would entertain it. But right now, there is a backup plan, backup plan, and Jim filled.
That's what I wanted to talk about.
Yeah, I mean, he filled a 450,000 square foot building in the next town over, which is pretty impressive.
I saw you today stand up.
Mayor, Madam President, and certainly the members of the council, I feel compelled to, to stand here, to ask just a few of these questions. As you know, Pleasantville is in the district in which I represent and there has certainly been some concern about these plants opening up around the state of New Jersey. I had this conversation with the mayor and I'll give counsel, President, and I want to make it very clear that I support the medical marijuana use. We do not support recreational, and I understand that you made that very clear today, that you will not be supporting in terms of buying to the public. But, I'm always skeptical, and George knows this from my days on city council. We've got to be very careful when we allow folks to come into our communities and build plants and build things and promise you the world. And once it's up and running, it's a whole new ballgame. I'm glad to hear Jim make it very clear, it's a partnership between the city of Pleasantville and its company. But, let's be very clear, that every shut-eye is not sweet. Yeah, and what I mean by that is, is that this cannot be one of those projects that flies through and everybody jumps on board and says it's a good opportunity for revenues to come into the city of Pleasantville and new job training programs and to put 40 to 80 people to work. It sounds good in the beginning. The truth of the matter is, is that once this is up and running, if in fact you're licensed to do it, we hope that commitment, Jim and George, that you made to the city of Pleasantville, certainly to the residents, you honor that commitment because, yes, it's nice renderings and it's like, I tell the story, everybody go, man, it's like a politician, he tell you every damn thing you want to hear. And to the rubber meets the road. And then, at the end of the day, when the rubber meets the road, I thought I could, I would, you know. And so, I'm always skeptical. I'm not one to, to jump up and say I support these types of projects. I understand the economic development, the economic, the tax base that it would bring to the city of Pleasantville. I understand almost 80 jobs, that's, that's huge. I understand putting people to work in job training programs and to make sure that they are there, trained properly to be able to do this. But not this, let's not kid ourselves, at the end of the day, folks tell you what you want to hear. And so, what happens is you've always got to be mindful of the fact that you made a commitment. You have to honor that commitment. And I charge this governing body, the mayor and the members of the city council, the whole day foot to the fire. Because, I'm not saying they're not going to do it, but, we've seen this many days across this county, in Atlantic City, the folks promise, George, I see George all the time, George knows, folks promise you to work and it doesn't happen. And I think nobody's going to knock the fact of jobs and training programs and that. But, again, I support the use of medical, but we've got to be mindful of the fact that we must send the message loud and clear, Councilor, the mayor, this is not recreational. Don't think that the buddy systems are going to get inside and be able to get stuff to the outside folks. I don't think that's what Pleasantville wants. I don't think Pleasantville needs that. With all the stuff we have going on in our communities now, we've got to be very careful of types of projects and things that come into our community because there's a whole lot of communities right here in Atlantic County don't want it in their neighborhoods. But we accept everything in ours and we've got to be careful when we look around and other towns don't want it and we taking stuff. You keep the flag on, keep the flag up. So, I want to commend Jim and George, certainly the administration, I know y'all put a lot of time into this. Mayor, you know, we had this conversation again this afternoon, where I stood, where I stand. But, I feel compelled to say something tonight because, as I said, it's the district in which I represent, but more importantly, we charge you all to hold them accountable because at the end of the day, they don't live in Pleasantville. They don't have to hear all the drama goes on in Pleasantville. And by saying that, let them come around the community and so folks can actually get to see them and know them more, not just as a business, but as a community friendly. And we commend you again, Jim. I know Jim, because he has signed and my son play baseball together, but we never talk politics, we never even talk about this project. Because I was certainly wanting to see what it is that they were going to bring forward today. I think it's something that you probably could live with in the city of Pleasantville, but I think the message ought to be clear, it is not recreational facility. And I think that message we can be very clear. Thank you, Madam President, thank Mr. Mayor for the time and certainly the council.
Thank you.
The only time I have on that, the mayor was clear the very first day we met up, that was a non-starter.
I, I think I forgot to second that because he made that very clear statement.
And as late as Friday, everything we promised, maybe different than a little Atlantic City, is inviting.
Everything is.
And as late as Friday, we were negotiating the final deal. The mayor, business administrator, and the attorney beat us up.
Let me say this in first, I know that this is going to fast-track the governor and folks in the state legislature, as I was coming over the day on the news, how they are trying to push this stuff through real, 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 real quick. There's a lot of, probably a lot of good economic that will come out of it, but we've got to continue to look around the country and find the good, the bad, and the ugly that has had the impact on the communities. And we don't want to be, don't want to repeat what has happened in other communities. We need to do better. And so, so at the end of the day, we're not turning on each other. So, again, I know this is Governor Murphy's pet peeve, get this stuff up and running. But again, you got to ask the question, in whose community? And I'll be reminded of that.
Freethold, I want to thank you because you care a lot about Pleasantville. We realize that and we do appreciate your concern. Your concern has lost a lot of concern.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I want to do a follow-up on Freethold, of course, you mentioned you folks getting to know the citizenry of Pleasantville. I'd like to invite you out tomorrow night to our night out.
Sure.
And there's where you will see a lot of the citizenry of Pleasantville.
Good things about that. If I go tomorrow night, I'm getting divorced, my anniversary, so that's not happening.
Jim, I wanted to ask a couple about the employment. Is that high-end jobs as well as, is that all family?
Yes.
And that's what you're going to be training for?
Yes, we've been back and forth with Mr. Genetti on the jobs program. I kind of like what we, I mean, we went back and forth on that too, so.
So, it's going to be high-end jobs as well as back-to-job, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a good question, man. Let me follow up. You, you're the owner of the Lennox property?
Correct.
And the operation out there. What is your general percentage of Atlantic County employees out there?
Well, our support, honor, we have a, we have a unique program there. We have, I don't think that we're going to be able to do the same program here, and we talked about it. There's a second chance program there to where, you know, nobody in Atlantic County's doing that. Berett is doing that. I can't tell you exactly how many employees it is, but I know it's a lot.
General percentage, that's all?
Yes.
At least 50% of them?
Oh, yes.
At least of Atlantic County?
Yes, and there's a lot from Pleasantville too.
Okay.
I mean, I have a company, employs over 200 people, different company, 90% from Atlantic County, over 50% minorities in the.
Mayor?
Yeah. Freethold, of course, thank you for your candor and I just want to say that the governor may be fast-tracking this, but we have spent a lot of time with these guys. And I said that our mouths were open when they first mentioned it. It took a long time for our mouths to close up. So, we feel very confident that, oh, one of the things that wasn't mentioned is about the security. The security standards are mandated by the state are unbelievable. You can make the parallel with the casinos first opened up, where they had DGB, where they, Division of Gaming Enforcement, which has stringent laws about casinos. This is something very comparable where the state mandates security, this is highly, highly mandated as far as standards for security. That's why I wanted to mention about the 10-foot wall. And just to ease everyone's concern about recreational, I said it earlier, but we approved the ordinance for no recreational use or retail at the beginning of the council meeting. We took it at, already, that was something that, you know, we wanted to address. So, and I think we, they answered all the questions. I didn't see any more questions that, you know, they could answer. They answered all the questions. Believe me when I say it was kind of redundant, but we wanted to know. We wanted to know and we wanted to put it in writing, we wanted to memorialize it and we did that.
Yeah, Madam President, I must go to the main side. I am on the committee and I've done the interview pretty good. I did hear tonight that there are already forms in Atlantic County.
EHT, you're talking about the rows?
Yes. It already exists. And where I heard it, I was impressed. I see the facility there and what you have done already. You made it crystal clear to us why you are moving, why you have come to the city. And hearing that the state will have a representative at the facility and the X's, Y's, and Z's, I was impressed because I have observed in the community how we legalize gambling and mean it positive and far as to hit the taxpayer in the state. And I see this, understand that there are two north, two central, and two southern. Then I got the same feeling as my mayor. you expect, then I got the same feeling as my mayor, that we might be honored to have such a rulebook, and how you have clearly stated that the law is the law, and the law will be written, and our fine police department certainly will do that job, and we may have a fine rulebook, and the real question is, what does it mean to those assembled tonight and the residents of the city? And we don't want to get into the dollars, but it's better than this year, it's certain, my pet peeve is that we want regular, we want good regular, and we want to continue to bring that tax rate beyond where it should be, so for those reasons, and the employment, you just can't run out there and get a job, there's a training process, so those who know what they're doing, I just prefer with our Freehold and our others. And we really touched that our residents did have a host of questions, again, thank you for the presentation, and how I think everything has been laid out in order, and we're a little free reforming, and the picture you have there, I like the picture of greenhouse, because that's a pretty sight when they get finished, so, can we say everyone the best?
Thank you.
The greenhouse, it's probably best that we can see them.
Correct.
That's for the summer growth only?
Correct.
For the full month?
Correct.
Full month group?
Four and a half.
And then they're not used then from then on?
Uh, they have to be cleaned and processed and then move for the next group.
Okay.
Is there anyone else in the public that wishes to speak?
I have been an advocate in this area for years, I've been working in Atlantic City to fund skate park for the past six years, so advocacy has always been something that's very important to me. My wife and I opened a couple yoga studios in the area, one in Galway called Gro Yoga, in my glass bar, Gro Yoga, so I've been an entrepreneur since my early twenties, and this particular field, this particular study, this particular medicine, has been affecting me and my family for over 12 years. My dad was diagnosed with misophagoma when I was 13, and doctor after doctor after doctor said that he would die, that he would not live to see me graduate high school, and right after his chemotherapy, his third round of chemotherapy, he was essentially a part of the generation that started kicking off the opioid crisis. They were over prescribing him a ridiculous amount of opioids, and he was in tremendous pain, and I don't judge him at all, pain is different in everybody, but we as a family couldn't idly stand by and watch him take so much medicine, so I took it upon myself to start making him CBD and THC treats. And over the years, my father has cut his opioid dependency almost completely by three-quarters. He was taking almost 200 milligrams of OxyContin a day, down to about 60 milligrams of OxyContin a day, and that is with the help of a natural plant. And him and I took a trip to Massachusetts, he decided to come home and get his recreation, or get his, his medical license, and when he signed up in 2012, there was 2,500 people in the medical marijuana, medical marijuana, I guess, system in New Jersey. As of this year, there are 45,000 people, so 2012 to 2018, that skyrocketed, and I think that people are becoming more aware that you don't have to smoke pot or smoke joints or whatever to get this medicine, it's going to be readily available in all different types of forms that can be very discreetly taken and don't get you messed up or anything, with a lot of the prescription pills that I've seen my father, who I'm a caregiver to, and my uncle Zach, who I'm a caregiver to, take a really hard toll on their body, and so that's kind of what Zach wanted me to speak about.
Yeah, I didn't know what part of the red tape process it's going to be about, but I just want to explain that it's helped me enough, because I've been part of a program almost here, and it's helped me with circulation, it's helped me with digestive problems, and he's my, actually my driver, so when, you can't put this idea, knowing it's closer to my home, it makes it a whole lot easier for me to get my medication. I live right around the corner, but I have to get a cab if I can't get over my Uber driver and take me to get my medication, and then there's a timeframe, and then, you know, there's a lot of red tape to do with just getting my medication, and my medications have also been broken down to 40, I went from non-medication to like 40, so there's a whole lot of benefit to it, but I know, I understand what my man was saying, you got to be able to see through everything, all transparency, but there's nothing false apart by it, as far as you're saying recreational and all that, I think that's all out the window, but if it's going to help benefit somebody to where they can get off, all these medications that are over prescribed, I'm really 100%. And every time that I have a meeting, I'll be here to prove it, because I know I'll be looking better and better, you know why? Because now I can walk right across the street and get my damn medicine, no problem. I don't have to worry about waiting for my nephew to get off, coming on way from Ocean City and all the extra stuff. I walk around here, just around here, and I struggle a little bit, I just now recently retired. If I was an Oriон Social Security, I would work for these guys, like my right-handed guy, I would, because it's even, it even helps me sleep, I mean, of course, the different swings, but.
Thank you very, thank you very much for your time, we really appreciate that.
Thank you for sharing the time.
Thank you.
All right, you have your.
Anyone else? Oh, oh, sorry, mayor.
No, I just want to say, I would be remiss if I didn't have to say anything else about my Freeholder, Ernie Corsi, he has District 1 and 2 in Laxie and Pleasantville, correct? And I tell you what, if you sold him, it's a done deal, and he's so very protective and with our concerns and watching over Laxie and Pleasantville, he does not get the credit he deserves, so I just want to shout out to you, Mr. Corsi, thank you for being here.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you want to say?
No, I really appreciate your time, and it's been a pleasure working with you guys, and I can't wait for the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Resolution 132, authorizing entry and two and the execution of redevelopment agreement with RGC 3 LLC, or single purpose entity to be formed by RGC 3 LLC, with the conditional redevelopment of the 11 Devon Lane redevelopment area.
Motion to adopt, second.
Swan?
Yes.
Sisdrum?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Harmon?
Yes.
Christmas?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 133, offer for sale property known as Block 64, Lot 16, AKA 129 South Main Street in the city for a minimum bid of $50,000. Swan?
Yes.
Sisdrum?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Harmon?
Yes.
Christmas?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 134, we're in approval of a coin drop to the Pleasantville Police Foundation.
Second.
Swan?
Yes.
Sisdrum?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Harmon?
Yes.
Christmas?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 135, approve a submission of a municipal aid grant application MA-2019, Pleasantville City, Dad 3017, and execute a grant of relief with the New Jersey Department of Transportation.
Second.
Swan?
Yes.
Sisdrum?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Harmon?
Yes.
Christmas?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 136, authorizing the city to enter into a memorandum of agreement with Stockton University for the homework completion program.
Second.
Swan?
Yes.
Sisdrum?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Harmon?
Yes.
Christmas?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 137, authorizing certified amounts of deed as deeds against properties claimed by the city.
Motion, second.
Swan?
Yes.
Sisdrum?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Harmon?
Yes.
Christmas?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Resolution 18, as national health care.
Second.
Swan?
Yes.
Sisdrum?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Harmon?
Yes.
Christmas?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 139, admitting the contract between the city and Pleasantville of the Mayman Police and National Association Number 77.
Motion, second.
Swan?
Yes.
Sisdrum?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Harmon?
Yes.
Christmas?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 140, authorizing agreement for the incoming group to assist review recreational and will programs at the Willows at Pleasantville.
Motion, second.
Swan?
Yes.
Sisdrum?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Harmon?
Yes.
Christmas?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Resolution approved. I need a motion to pay for bills.
Second.
Swan?
Yes.
Sisdrum? Sisdrum?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Harmon?
Yes.
Christmas?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion approved. I need a motion to approve bingo license. Second, thank you. Swan?
Yes.
Sisdrum?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Harmon?
Yes.
Christmas?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Mayor?
I think I said it all.
Councilman Scott?
Good evening, everyone, thank you for coming out, and I'd like to thank Corsi back there for coming out and speaking on it to the public, because we really need you, your input is always good, and we appreciate it very much, and have a blessed night, everyone else.
Thank you. Councilman Swan?
Good evening, everyone, thanks for coming out.
Councilman Sisdrum?
Good evening, thanks for coming out, and congratulations again to the class 2 officers and class 3 officers.
Thank you, Councilman Swan.
Good evening. Ditto all things that we participate in tonight, thanks for your presence, and I'll see you tomorrow evening, and bravo, and get a national higher.
Oh, no, you didn't know the good side of the good.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for coming out, Freeholder Corsi, make you visit more often, we can, we can use a lot of positive words. Future Councilperson Davenport, thank you for coming out, you have a few more to come out to, so a lot happened tonight, a lot happened for the good, and have a good evening.
That's me, good evening, thank you for coming out, and I'd like to thank the zoning board chair for coming, especially our Mr. President. Freeholder Corsi, it's always good to see you, it's always, and you really have Pleasantville at heart, I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
And I'd like to, they're gone, but say congratulations to the class 2 and 3 officers, and captain skip, I mean chief skip, could you tell us the difference between the 2 and the 3?
Yeah, the class 3s, they're just for the schools, they police only in the schools, the class 2s, they're, they can be used out on the street, we use them here in the courts, you know, for courtroom security and out at the metal detector.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you. Okay, Councilman Swan?
Just my son's presentation, I'd better do a record to thank him, so.
Yeah.
I could go get his brother, she's going to die also, he's doing good, and he works quite well with our chief executive, we're treating, I give your name a little bit too often.
This is good.
Okay, if there's nothing else, I'd like to congratulate you on this, the motion.
Second.